And good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting for, what is it, January the 9th, didn't we? We're glad to have a good crowd of adults, of moms and dads and students along tonight to be with us. We welcome you very much to our meeting. We're always glad to have this, along with other distinguished folks that we have as well. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand. We have five students from Murfreesboro City Schools leading us in our pledge. From Mitchell Nielsen, a 4th grader, Kai Green, and Brother Cavy Green, who is a 2nd grader at Mitchell Nielsen, along with Lilian Ratliff, who is also a 2nd grader at Mitchell Nielsen, along with Bethany Ashburn, a 5th grader at John Pittard, and Sister Lydia Ashburn, a 1st grader at John Pittard. We'll ask you to please stand for our pledge and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Music) [S02] (Music)
A job well done![270.27][270.27](Applause) Board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda. I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Barrett.
Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, then there is none. Thank you very much. All right, communications.
Hi.
Hi. How are you?
I am good, thank you. The music was throwing me off a little bit. So we'll start our communications. Mitchell Nielsen Schools would like to thank Ginger and Danny DeMumbrium and all the members of the Sinking Creek Bike Club for their monetary donation to their field trip fund. They also want to thank the Life Group Sunday School Class at Third Baptist Church for the generous donation to their uniform fund. Also, Fuzzy's Taco Shop for donating items to the Positive Behavior Student Incentive Drawing. So those are all announcements from Mitchell Nielsen. Murfreesboro City Schools would like to thank First Presbyterian Church for their generous donation of food to supplement the backpack food program. Also, to the Walmart Foundation for a grant to help buy supplies for that backpack food program. Murfreesboro City Schools would also like to thank the many individuals who donated to the Indigent Care Fund in memory of Ms. Linda Cox. And as you remember, Ms. Cox was a former employee of Murfreesboro City Schools. The ESP Winter Fun Run collected 220 pounds of food for Greenhouse Ministries, their community pantry. It was a cold, cold winter fun run. And amazing group of individuals running in the cold. Congratulations to Hobgood Elementary for receiving a Read to Be Ready grant from the state for $22,500. These dollars will be used to encourage reading in the summer for 20 students from across the district, thanks to Kristin Trennan and Carissa Dotson, who constructed that application. We also received Read to Be Ready funds last year for our summer program, so it's nice to have those as a repeat. Murfreesboro City Schools is excited to announce that the Department of Human Services will host their Summer Feeding Summit on January the 25th at the Tennessee State University, and has asked our Food Service Director, Sandy Shealy, to not only set up a booth and bring the chow bus for everyone to tour, but also she'll be speaking to that group. Ms. Shealy has helped several school systems over the last several years actually coordinate a mobile feeding program in their school district. We've had a school from Alabama, we've had Lubna School, Special District has actually already started their program after talking with Ms. Shealy. And the Metro Action Commission now has four, what we call chow buses. Trousedale County is also in the process of developing a similar program, so we appreciate Ms. Shealy and everything she has done and the support that y'all have given to actually make chow bus a reality. Congratulations to overall Creek Elementary, Bradley Academy, and Northfield for being selected by the Tennessee Department of Education and the Tennessee Behavioral Supports Project, a civil-level model of demonstration schools for response to intervention and intervention for behavior. It's mouthful, RTI 2B. We are also excited to announce that the following schools have achieved recognition for their ongoing commitment to implement a multi-tiered system of support for behavior and social learning. Those include Discovery School and Irma Segal, who received a bronze level of demonstration, and then Hobgood, John Pittard, and Mitchell Nielsen, and Reeves Rogers received a School of Recognition Award. We appreciate the hard work of all of our schools and are just thrilled to see so many of our schools receive that recognition. We want to give a thank you and a shout out to the MTSU Men's and Women's Tennis Team. They will be teaching tennis to our students at Kason Lane, Irma Segal, and Discovery School this week during their physical education classes. You're invited to come out and watch those student athletes come and work with our students. We would also like to invite the public to attend the annual African-American Cultural Celebration on January 25th. It will be held from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Patterson Community Center. There'll be student performances, arts exhibits, food tasting, a photography exhibit by Shackletts Photography, and other community agencies will be there to show their displays and promote the African-American culture. Little Sprouts and Mitchell Nielsen Primary invite you to a ribbon cutting for their new playground at 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, January the 17th. Weather permitting, we will be outside with our children seeing their new playground equipment. And the City Schools Foundation invites you to attend Excellence in Education on January the 26th. The event will be held at MTSU's New Student Union Center and will feature Reeves Rogers Elementary. Honorees this year are Doctors Max and Mary Moss. And finally, to wrap up the communications, we want to take time to wish Robin Yule a happy birthday, and we're proud she decided to spend it at a school board meeting.[604.04][604.04](Laughter/Applause) Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I have two thank you notes that I will pass around to the board. One is from Beverly and Bruce Harrison, thanking us for a gift that we gave to a live hospice, and also from Northfield Elementary School, a thank you note for things that we have done for them. You also, I will announce a former teacher from Murfreesboro City Schools, Miss Susan Minifee, passed away over the weekend, and you'll want to remember Hank and that family later on. All right.
We did have your financial audit report, and I'm going to turn that over to Gary.
Good evening, board. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
This report is last year, so for the new year, we're going to go over the report from last fiscal year. It is our Murfreesboro City Schools' annual financial report, which ended June 30th, and also the city schools' internal school funds. As you know, our auditors are Matlock and Clements. They are certified public accountants here in town, and they're here to answer questions and speak to you tonight. So I think, Andy, you're going to go ahead and lead us through the audit reports, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you once again for having us. It's our honor to be here for the third time now presenting not one but two audits before you. I'll start off with the internal school funds audit report. You know, just hit some of the highlights and go through, and then if you have any questions, you can follow up on that. So as far as internal school funds, the report has been filed with the Tennessee Comptroller's Office. As shown in the independent auditor's report, we issued an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, which is the most preferred opinion you can want. We've also issued an audit report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. On that, there were no material weaknesses, no material noncompliance. There were no issues like that identified. A couple of the financial highlights, so to speak. Total assets were $835,000. You had a small amount of liability spread out over a few schools, which left your end in fund balance, combined with all the schools, 834,500. Total revenues were 1.6 million, total expenditures 1.569, which you actually had an increase in fund balance of a little over $40,000, as it relates to the internal school funds. Are there any questions related to the internal school funds part? Yes, sir.
All right. I just had a question, clarification for me. In the ...[778.82][778.82](Coughing) In the auditor's report, under the basis for adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, it goes on to say that it's a basis of accounting, other than accounting principles generally accepted in the United States, to meet the requirements of the state of Tennessee. So can you break that down for me? Is there something that is not being done that should be done? Because it says at this point, "We're doing something, but we're not meeting the requirements of the state of Tennessee."
No, sir. What it is, is it's an adverse opinion on generally accepted accounting principles because the principles, it's another comprehensive basis of accounting that all schools follow, the internal school funds follow. So we have to, in our report, it's in every report for every system, you have to issue an adverse opinion on generally accepted accounting principles, and then we issue a clean, unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting, which is another comprehensive basis of accounting. It is nothing Murfreesboro City Schools or any other system is doing wrong. It's just clarifying that we're not issuing an opinion, a clean opinion, on generally accepted accounting principles. We're issuing a clean opinion on the other comprehensive basis of accounting.
Okay. Well, I trusted that it was acceptable, but still, it begged a question from me about that. And as far as the independent audit, the school-by-school audits, I just, I guess I have a question, and this is for, I guess, Mr. Anderson or whomever, regarding, say, for instance, Black Fox Elementary. At one point, their inflow was $122,000 this year. If I'm reading that right, under the revenues, I'm looking at page 12. And it says we have ... So I was just kind of impressed by that number. So where's that income of $10,000 a month coming from?
Well, they have various fundraisers, they have contributions from the community, they have board allocation funds that all come into the revenue picture. So it comes in lumps, it's not like even amount each month, it's just different times. The school has a fundraiser, can raise a substantial amount of money, and Black Fox is fortunate in that they have some private donors who do make some substantial contributions.
Okay. Well, that was impressive, and I see that all of the schools are doing well on revenues coming in, so that's good. If we ever get behind on budget, on the general district budget, we may need to ask them to raise us some money.[949.44][949.44](Laughter) Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is there any regulation, state law or anything, or what do we recommend, what do you recommend, for a school's fund balance at the end of each year and monies that are coming in? And Mr. Ballard has indicated money coming into one school. What do we do to make sure, or is there anything to make sure that these schools are spending the money that's coming in when it comes in so they don't have a large fund balance at the end of the year?
Yes, sir. I think they all are encouraged, and you want to encourage them. You know, the idea is to spend, you know, the money that's raised that school year, the idea is to spend on those students that are there. And so I noticed there are a couple of schools, you know, that have accumulated a fund balance, but in going back and looking into it, it's not like, you know, it's just a little by little, you know, they may, revenues may exceed expenditures by 10,000 or 12,000 a year. Well, over time, you know, that adds up. But I think the main thing is just to encourage them to continue to spend, and if they have exceeded, you know, they have accumulated a bit of a fund balance, maybe encourage them to try to come together and do something that benefits the entire school.
But you're, so you're telling me that there is no law or no regulation that requires them to spend that money as it comes in, when it comes in, on that particular group of students? Is that right?
Well, they are required to spend. I think if there was a large, a large amount of fund balance left over for that particular year, to say, you know, Black Fox, for example, they have a pretty good-sized fund balance, but yet, when you look at this year, they only had about a $7,800 increase, you know, from last year. So I think the state would point out if there is a large difference between those in one year, but there's nothing, as far as accumulating a fund balance, that's really on the, I think, the board level and the school level, just to encourage them to maybe handle it if it has accumulated.
But when you've already got a good fund balance at the end of a year, and then you increase it ...
Right.
$7,800 by the end of the next year.
Yeah, there's nothing from the state that says that that's not allowed, but I do think, you know, it's a good idea to maybe encourage them to use some of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well ...
All right, Mr. Ballard?
I don't know if I'm jumping ahead. To the summations where we had the discrepancies, there were three discrepancies found, that were significant discrepancies, and the word significant seems to be a little bit of a misnomer, because then you come along and say, "Well, it's not so significant." But anyway, Black Fox and Scales and Bradley, my question, I guess, to whoever wants to take it, is that Bradley is a repeat offense from not coming up to standard in two years. What is the, and I read the comments that they're going to be retrained again, the bookkeeper's going to be retrained. What's going to be different next year then, from the previous two years?
Well, thank you for the question. What we have done in our office is to send a person who was an excellent school bookkeeper who now works in the central office, and she goes out and spends time with the schools to make sure that they're getting it. And she has spent time before Christmas, and she's going back after Christmas to work with them side by side, to make sure they understand what the rules and regs are. So we are actually dedicating more assistance to the people in the field.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions on that part of the report? All right. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Now, I'll discuss the second, the annual financial report for the district. All right, so that report has also been filed with the Tennessee Comptroller's Office, and it has also been uploaded with the federal audit clearinghouse, which is required due to the federal nature of the district. As before, we also issued an independent auditor's report on this audit, and we also issued an unmodified opinion. And we also issued an auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance, as well as an auditor's report on major programs and then compliance on those federal awards. As you can see on page 78, Schedule of Findings in Question Costs, there were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no material noncompliance issues identified on either the financial statement level or the federal award level. Which is a very significant, good accomplishment. As far as some numbers, net position on the government-wide level ended a little under $61 million, $60,849,000, meaning the assets and deferred outflows exceeded its liabilities and deferred inflows by that amount. For the year ending June 30th, 2017, the change in net position was an increase of $9.36 million. Governmental revenues were a little over $81 million, and you also, on the governmental fund level, you had an increase in fund balance of around $2 million. And the governmental fund fund balance ended at $9.2 million. Some of the major highlights is the outlays for new capital assets totaled, or equaled approximately $13 million. It was a continuation of the expansion project at Hobgood, as well as the energy efficiency project across all of the schools. So those were some of the key points I wanted to point out on that audit. Any questions there?
Any questions, comment? Okay.
Well, I have nothing further to add. We really appreciate the opportunity, the relationship we have with you guys. When it comes to the internal school funds, you know, we're able, and I think I've brought this, you know, I've brought this up the past two years as well, but we're able to be in the schools and to talk with the bookkeepers and principals and to try to work with them and try to help them understand the manual, and we have meetings with them, and we really enjoy the relationships we have with everybody at the central office and the schools, and we appreciate you guys. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your report and you working with our, all of our bookkeepers, not only at central office, but also in the schools as well. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, it's okay. I'd like to recognize the ladies in the finance department with us tonight. She does not know I'm doing this, but Beth Prater, our finance manager, is back here.[1422.71][1422.71](Laughter/Applause) And also Rachel Bloom, Amber Hunter, Deana Thomas, Melinda Fee, Becky Sally, and Kim Fisher is the team that really does all the work that you get in this, and our 12 excellent school bookkeepers. So just wanted to give them that little bit, because they're never in the limelight, like to at least mention their names, so thank you for allowing me to do that.
We know they do all the work, Gary.[1447.26][1447.26](Laughter)
I never argued that point.[1451.13][1451.13](Laughter)
Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you to our, all of the people in our finance department, department, department? I'll get it right in a minute. For a job well done. I know it's not an easy job for anybody, but it's a lot of work, and we appreciate very much the work that they do.
I'd like to ask Ms. Christina Maddox and Maria Johnson if they'd join me at the podium. We're celebrating tonight, and we're celebrating because of your support, and we're celebrating because of the teachers and the support staff at Murfreesboro City Schools. And tonight, we're celebrating two schools. On Thursday night, we'll be celebrating the district, and we look forward to doing that with the council. But we have among us two reward schools. In Tennessee, there were 25 reward schools recognized for progress and performance, 85 recognized for progress, and only 59 that were recognized for performance. And both Discovery School and Scales were recognized for their performance this year, so we're talking the top 5% schools in the state. I have to say that these two ladies, their leadership makes all the difference. Now, they would argue that it's all about their staff, and I understand that, and they should say that. But I would also tell you that their leadership has made a huge amount of difference. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you, Christina first, and you can introduce who you have with you, and then Maria, you can introduce who you have with you. And then separately, we're going to take a picture because we have your banners, and they're pretty large. So we'll let you talk before we do that.
Well, I would like to just say first and foremost, I have to acknowledge why I'm standing here today, and that is because of the students that you see. So I will ask that Kaylee, Charis, Zach, Grayson, Stefan, Helen, and Paige, please stand. And these are the 6th graders that are represented, oh, and Elijah, he made it. Come on over, Elijah. So these are 6th graders that represent our results for this year, this past year. As you know, as our board, it was only 5th and 6th graders that represented our test scores to be a reward school. Although Discovery School is known for being a reward school, having top achievers, we do get this acknowledgement, but this year, on top of being high achievers, we actually got growth. And for that, standing in front of you, I think I am the most proud as the administrator, because in the history of Discovery, growth has only come twice to that campus. So to have reward school and growth at a Level 4, coming from a Level 1, is astonishing. And it is because of these students, and it is absolutely because of Ms. Beth Turner, who is our 6th grade teacher, who needs to stand.[1636.88][1636.88](Applause) And of course, Ms. Shadat Young, who needs to stand, who is a 5th grade teacher as well.[1648.13][1648.13](Applause) And honestly, as Dr. Gilbert says, anytime she takes acknowledgement, she wants to thank us administrators for what we do, but truly, I stand before you because it is about children for me, just as it is for Dr. Gilbert and Ms. Johnson, as she will tell you. Without our students at Discovery School, we would not be the school we are, and without the top-notch educators I have that potion challenged them, we wouldn't be standing here with this reward for Murfreesboro City and for Discovery. So I'm incredibly honored. They make my job and my position my happy place in life, and they see that all over my office, and they know that. So I thank them.[1688.41][1688.41](Applause)
Good evening. The principal of Scales Elementary, myself, Maria Johnson, we're extremely honored to be here and be getting this reward of a reward school. I have our school leaders with us tonight. Hopefully, our children are at home doing their homework, but I want to recognize our school leaders here that have helped us to get to where we are. Our students, the faculty, as well as our parents have worked extremely hard for us to get the growth that we received. As you know, we are the largest school in the Murfreesboro City School District. We do have a diverse population, so I think that's a lot to the staff that I have for today, so I'm going to ask them to stand. I have John Harding, our kindergarten team leader.[1732.76][1732.76](Applause) Amber Kelly is our 1st grade team leader.[1738.51][1738.51](Applause) Megan Brewer, our second grade team leader, I couldn't find her. Kimberly Hicks, our third grade team leader. Kayla Embry is our fourth grade team leader. Lisa Boye is our fifth grade team leader. Dan Lasko is our sixth grade team leader. Meredith Davis is our academic interventionist. Sarah Todd is our academic coach. And my right hand, Kevin Templeton, is our assistant principal. So, then, as a team, along with our families, our support staff as well, is how we obtain our growth. And again, we're honored, and we just want to thank you all very much.
I have to give a special acknowledgement, because I forgot someone that I just can't forget. But I'm used to not having a coach, but I have to thank Ms. Karen Cook. She is our instructional coach, and she absolutely plays a part.
So, let me have Discovery first, and Lisa, I'm going to let you tell us where to be and what we need to do, but we're going to unroll the banner up here and take a picture with all of you all.
So, while they're gathering up, I might have some firsthand experience with some of these kids and their teachers. And what I like about these teachers that are here and the ones that are not here, and I know with all the Scales teachers, because when I've been at Scales, y'all have been doing this as well, they are making school fun. They're sneaking in the learning. They're very creative, and they're having a great time. And I really appreciate that they're making learning fun, so thank you all for doing that.
What'd she say?
Smile, Ms. Turner.
Okay, we're taking pictures.
Good job, Beth. Y'all are awesome. Go Scales. Thank you, congratulations. This is awesome.
Somebody needed to get.
Congratulations.
Well done, Mr. Templeton. Because he was a student of mine. Oh, yeah, yes, he was. His brother taught with us as well. Thank you very much for everybody that was here for pictures and to receive the banner. A job well done, and we're very proud of each and every one of you.
Don't they have to stay until the end of the meeting?
To get the pictures published, you need to stay.
I think everybody should have to stay for the policy readings.
I'm going to look in my computer one more time and see if it's decided to work.
Two other announcements. One is for the public, there is a new law that has taken place that in a school zone, when the lights are flashing, that there can be no use of mobile phones. Now, if you're parked waiting on your children, that's a different ballgame. But as far as if you are moving in any kind of motor vehicle, then you don't need to have your phone on unless it is not being held by your hand. The other announcement is that we will celebrate School Board Appreciation Week the last week in January, so we will be celebrating you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And those are your communications.
All right, thank you, ma'am, very much. All right, consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Second, but Mr. Settles, all in favor, say aye. Any opposition? And there is none. All right, thank you.
Your action items, we are working on policies again, and we will eventually get finished with policies, but we're not finished yet. So, at this point, I'm going to turn the first group of policies over to Mr. Anderson, and then the last set or sets will be Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. The first policy is 1.1061. It rescinds Board Policy BO-38. It's about School Board Accountability Standards and Code of Ethics. State requires that every school board have a code of ethics. You've had one in place for years, and you do follow the TSBA code for the most part. So, what you have before you is the code of ethics and also a code of ethics, a conflict of interest disclosure statement. If there ever comes a vote where you have a conflict, you have this document to fill out, and which basically says that you're voting your conscience, and you're not voting to, based on any kind of conflict that you might have. So, this is your, this is on first reading for this policy on School Board Accountability Standards and Code of Ethics.
And we will correct the margins under Article 1.
Any questions on the policy, Mr. Ballard?
Not a question on the policy, it's fine. I just had a question for, to share, or, you know, to share with us what you do. If one of us is violating the code of ethics, what happens?
I think we can, code of ethics, if it's against the state law, then it's problematic. If it's not, there is no teeth in the state that says, if you don't follow your code, that there's any punishment, because school board members cannot actually do anything but censure other school board members. That's the only thing you can do. You cannot take.
So, it goes back to that, okay.
Out of office. It's basically, it's basically just saying you're going to do the right thing.
I promise I will. Okay, thank you, Gary.
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have a motion to approve Policy 1.1061?
Same.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, our next policy is 3.201, rescinds SS-5. This one deals with safety, and the safety program is, as you see, from line 7 to line 14. A lot of drills that have to be conducted. The state changed the law recently, and it's in the, it's in the next, it's in the next policy, but the state changed it. This one is an overview of the type of things that they need to be doing in the schools and following. We do track this every month with the schools, and they do fill out reports for us, and then we have it available for the state. And as you'll see, that they have to keep a copy of it, and the principal's responsible, and they have to keep a copy on the premises. But this is what we're currently doing, so there's no real change in anything here.
Question, Ms. Smith?
I have one revision, because I think it's a little casual in the writing, but it's in line 4, each principal is responsible for seeing that safety is part of the instructional program. I would replace that and say each principal is responsible for including safety as part of the instructional program.
Okay. Any other question? Mr. Barrett?
More like Ms. Smith just said, lines 18, 19. I just thought it was a little awkward the way it was stated. All, it's the last sentence, "All staff members shall report all persons appearing to be improperly on school premises to be to the principal." And I just, I was wrestling with that, I was like, that just doesn't sound right. But if it sounds right to you, I don't mind leaving it in there, but it could use a rewrite, or, I didn't know how to rewrite it. I sat for 10 minutes trying to figure out another way to say that.
Well, I think if you look down at the bottom and see where it was coming from, you'll understand why it sounds like that.
From the state, okay, that's why, yeah. That makes perfect sense. I guess we need to leave it then.
Any other questions or comments? Have a motion to approve?
So, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, any other discussion, Ms. Smith?
So, are we adapting that line, that sentence of line 18? I mean.
Probably that's what the state said.
It's coming out of state statute.
Not adapting, adapting.
No, we're going to leave it as is.
We are? Okay.
Does it have to stay as is, is my question? Ms. Baker?
Any and all persons? Does that sound better?
Maybe. It just sounded, just when I was reading, it just sounded awkward.
Cleaned up a little bit. You know?
What's your pleasure?
I'd say, I'd just leave it, I'm not. It's not going to bug you that much.
All in favor to approve as written?
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Your next policy is Emergency Preparedness Plan. It's Policy 3.202, rescinds Board Policy BO-24. In line 2, we've added, I'll read you the whole line, "of the district Emergency Preparedness Plan, which shall include procedures for nuclear or bomb threats." We've added nuclear, I think Mr. Barrett was the one who brought that to our attention based on the previous policy. Other than that, in the section 9 through 15, you can see all the specific drills that are required at the school level.
Ms. Renee?
Unfortunately, I don't have my notes that I put on my computer, since it doesn't want to work, but I think that I had a question on line 7 and 8. The question being, when we have these emergency procedures for intruders, whatever, that's our safety plan, and this tells us on line 7 and 8, they'd be distributed to parents. And I thought we did not do that.
The exemption for that is the intruder drill and some of the things that we've worked out with detail. And I don't have the exact statute, but they did make, they did make that an exception. Right.
Well, we just want families to know that we do have these plans in place. You won't see what they are, because that's why we have them in place. Okay, thank you. Oh, and I had one, may I, one more?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Gilbert, this is just more a point of information, I guess, but the idea, down at the bottom of a pandemic flu or whatever, hopefully, that will never happen, but because of these school systems near and around us and closing for the flu or whatever the illness might be, how does one go about that? Because I know this says something about dealing with the health emergencies and those personnel. If something hit us here, if we forge ahead next week and everybody's sick, how do you make a determination, or does that come from you?
Last, it does. Last year, we looked at the, what happens in that situation is last year, we looked at numbers every day when we were really seeing the flu outbreak. And what we never saw was the consistency in every school that would justify closing down the district. Where I would see that, the way I would think I would make that decision, I haven't reached that point yet, but the way I think that I would make that decision is if we were seeing an extreme number of students that were absent in every school, or if we were seeing that we were not going to be able to staff the school safely for the children.
That so many teachers are out.
Right. So, what happened last year, and what we were watching right before Christmas, too, is it might be that Mitchell Nelson might have 10% out. But on the other hand, Pittard might just have our regular, you know, 3% or 4%, or 5% or 6%. And so, we never saw it consistently across the district. Fortunately, I have thought about it, and one thing that we do have is, of course, we have our educational assistants, a pretty large number of those. But we've just never reached the point that we could not staff the school safely for the children. And if that were to happen, that would be a determining factor, too.
I think families probably want to know that information. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
So, if I'm reading this correctly, they have to have a fire drill every month. So, was that eight months of school, nine months of school? So, then, how many drills are we having? I mean, it doesn't say a total, but it said 12 drills? I mean, total drills, how much time are we having?
Well, there's two in the first month for fire drills, and the safety, the main intruder drill has to be in the first 30 days, and three additional, so it's 3, 4, and it looks like there's 14, 15 drills they have to have. And they also have to have an element of training in it, too. They have to read some stuff out about safety. That was a new piece added as well.
It had to do with the fire, much like what you would hear in a movie theater, for example. And that happens three times, I think.
Wow.
Well, it sounds like a lot, but when you realize that it does go quickly, whomever has the walkie-talkies, everybody notifies one another when everybody's out of the building, and the building is cleared, and it probably is 2 to 3 minutes max. So, it's really not a lot of time spent as far as instructional time, but I think they're very necessary for our children's safety, just in case.
So, how long do you think the whole process takes?
As far as like a fire drill or whatever, I'd say less than 10 minutes.
That's fabulous.
And on their, on their reports that they turn in, they put down how long were the, how long did it take to evacuate the building? Because that's the critical piece, so we know that. And then they keep them outside to make sure everybody's out there, and then they just bring them back in. It's 5, 10 minutes at the most.
Are all of the fire, like fire drills, aren't some of them pre-announced? They're not all surprise, are they? They didn't used to be, I don't know if they've changed now or not. Like, in other words, I may tell the faculty, okay, we're going to have a fire drill tomorrow at 9 o'clock.
At the beginning of the year, I always announce it because it scares the kindergartners, and I want to make sure that they are prepared. But then, other times, I'll tell the teachers, we'll have a fire drill this week, and then we do a surprise, because I like to test the system, too. So, the alarm system, so they hear what's happening.
Mr. Settles? I have a question. Are these all complete drills, or are they, like with the intruder drill, are those complete drills, or are they tabletop drills?
No, they would be actually evacuating a building.
So, even with like the intruder drill, they would go into whatever, do the actual, and not just a tabletop drill?
Because you want to see what's working and what's not working, what do we need to correct. In fact, there are days when you would have, like the police would be there, or someone from the central office, or a combination that might monitor to see, and I don't think we've done that this year, but I know that the police are interested in that. But actually, the police may have, have, okay, yeah.
And the police are involved with us on those, on those heavy-duty drills?
Because they do audits of our schools, and so it makes sense for them to be there to say, because they want to see how they're, they're working, too.
One part, and somebody mentioned this a minute ago, my computer went haywire, but line 19, where it says, "Staff members report persons appearing to be properly on school premises to the principal," could that say, also say principal slash designee?
It can, I think.
I'm on safety?
It can. I think the understanding there certainly is, there's always, I mean, you can always do that, but that wouldn't be.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, I lost, I lost connection a minute ago. Okay.
You lost it?
Yeah.
Maybe that means I can get on now.
All right, so we're on Policy 3.202, right?
Yes.
All right, I'm caught up now. Okay. Mr. Barrett?
Our, our old policy had that the procedures and number of drills are going to be found in the administrative directive. Is that still the case, or?
The specifics are.
The specifics.
And we will be in the process, and we'll probably start that next month after we get another round of policies under our belt. We're going to have to go through the administrative directives all over again, because all the policy numbers have changed. Now, as far as, I'll leave it at that, yes. But there are, there are, well, I'll just say that there are some procedures that are going to be left to the knowledge of only certain personnel.
Need to know, yeah, that's understanding, yeah.
On fire drills, are principals or buildings still required to keep a log of those for the fire marshal when they come by?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other question? Do I have a motion to approve Policy 3.202, Emergency Preparedness Plan? To have a motion to approve Policy 3.202 Emergency Preparedness Plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
The next one is Facilities Planning. It's Policy 3.208. It doesn't rescind any other policies, but it's interesting that everything they've said in this particular policy TSB has recommended is what we're actually doing. The principals have gotten their facilities needs assessments. They turn them in to us. It lists all the things that you see in lines six through eleven there. And then the system-wide is what I end up doing with Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Williford and go through the individual school assessments. And we look at the school population growths to see where we need to be adding new buildings, et cetera. And we get that information a lot from City Hall when they give us the growth information. And just today, they released the annual growth from last year. I would've shown it to you, but I can't get on the computer right now. The other part of this one is the asbestos. Mr. Williford is our asbestos manager and management plan. Anytime we do any kind of construction or new construction or any type of renovation is when we bring in the monitors and the sensors to make sure. That's why we have said in the past, if it's an older school, then the chances are it was built with asbestos in it. And it's, and every one of our buildings are encapsulated, that there is no risk of danger. The only time there is is if we go and do something construction-wise, and that's when we bring in the specialists with all the sensing monitors. And we have to, we have to put special screens up and special type of protection for them. But Mr. Williford handles that part for us.
Have a motion to approve Policy 3.208 Facilities Planning?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Next one is Naming of a School. It's descriptor code 3.210, and it rescends Board Policy BO forty-seven. We hope to be able to give you the opportunity to actually exercise this particular one in the near future as we get ready to build a, another school based on the projected growth of our, of our district that's, that's in the city's twenty thirty-five plan. We are projecting to have to build a new school every three to four years, just depending what happens in the cycles of growth. But this is a very, just basically the same as what it was before. It's just how you can name new schools.
Ms. Smith?
Maeve Way Sat thirty-two ten is written.
Second.
Any other questions, comments?
I missed yours. I'm sorry.
Chief Moak.
We just made the motion there quickly. Okay.
Okay. Motion was made by Ms. Smith and taken by Ms. King to approve this policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
And the next one is Board Inspection Acceptance of New Facilities. It's Policy 3.2, 3.215. We have not had one, but this is what we're doing when we're building a school. We have monthly meetings onsite with the architect, the construction manager, the engineers, and, and the inspectors of any particular thing that's gonna be inspected, like a fire marshal, et cetera. It's what we do. And then Dr. Gilbert, when I go in and say they're done, and she has to make final approval on it, and she's counting on us to make sure everything is in place. We do hold monies back, and just to make sure that everything is completed. You have a one-year window of making sure that things are done and that nothing's broken within that first year, and that's the standard construction process. But this is actually what we're doing now.
Question, Ms. Barrett?
This real, the board's representative, that's you or Dr. Gilbert?
At the meetings?
Yeah, the, said the board's representatives in the policy, so I was just asking.
I go to the meetings, Mr. Williford goes to the meetings, and then we bring him back for final to Dr.
Not one person, there's several people there.
Yeah, there's usually three or four of us there, because if they're talking about the part of the building, it's gonna be where they're starting to put wiring in for technology and stuff. I bring the technology person in. I bring in the HVAC people. I bring in whoever we need to have there to make sure we're getting it the way we need it.
Ms. Suddles?
My question is, after you all meet, then do we get like an update at our regular meeting? Or will maybe get an email? How does that work?
In the past, I've done it both ways. We get pictures that's sent to us, and I, I've had them at board meetings. Typically, I can just email them to you, because that's the way I get them.
Yeah.
Where it shows you the, the pictures of them. We also have a service that we instituted for the last two building projects that actually goes and takes pictures of where things are in the concrete and where wires are. Because blueprints aren't exactly always followed us to the line of where a wire is. So we've now gone to this extra step, so our maintenance department has video files that show exactly where things are, which will serve us well into the future when something happens twenty years from now.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Where are we in regards to our acceptance of the construction at Black Fox?
Well, we obviously have that whole year to go, but we have not finalized the final bills because there's some things that just aren't done yet. The, that, in fact, I just emailed yesterday, and I haven't gotten an email back about the swamp on your side there, that little lake, lake butch that they put in over there.
The geese were enjoying it the other day.
They haven't run that yet, so I, we don't pay them until they're done, their final payment. And then we still have up to a year to make sure everything's working, so. We have not taken the final acceptance on that. And there's actually little tweaks on other little projects, like Hobgood has a little tweak, so we're holding a little bit of money there, too, on where the rocket is. It's a simple little thing, but it's not gonna get done if we do not enforce that and hold the money back.
True. All right, do we have a motion to accept Policy 3.215?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Sure.
At this point, I'm gonna turn over to Kelly, and she, if you have any questions. Greg Lyles is here, who's our homeschool person who knows everything about homeschool.
This policy is required under state statute, and it is from TSBA. It's similar to the one that we had adopted previously, just changing the number. There really have not been any significant changes to it. Do you have any questions to this policy?
On some, on the requirements, Ms. Baker, how often do we check these requirements? Like required for the?
That is where I will have to defer to Mr. Lyles.
Cindy, please, what are you referring to, Mr. Campbell?
Uh, yeah, well, line five says a parent wishing to conduct a homeschool may meet the following requirements. And then there are
Okay.
eleven requirements. I'm just saying, how often do we check those? To see if the parent is fulfilling what they're supposed to do.
So first of all, in order for the parent to sign up for the independent homeschool program, that's where they're responsible for the child's education. They have to have a copy of the child's birth certificate, shot record. They have to bring proof of their address. We get a copy of their driver's license. And then they have to bring me proof of their educational level. That's all kept in the student's file for that school year. Also, they have to, at the end of the year, turn in an attendance record. The state says that you must provide four hours of instruction for a hundred and eighty days. So they turn in a calendar at the end of the school year indicating that. And we don't allow them to register again for the new year until we get that attendance calendar at the end of the school year.
So we are relying primarily on the parent's report as far as like instruction, four hours a day, or their attendance and that sort of thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Smith?
I have a few questions that go along with that. So how much contact do we have on a normal basis with these families, other than those reports?
That's it.
Wow. And how?
Unless they are, let me back up. Unless they're in the fifth grade, they have to, they're required to come in for the state test.
Okay, well, that was one of my questions.
Fifth and seventh grade, so for us, it'd be fifth grade.
For teen, ready, where do they take the test?
At their zone school.
Okay.
Our testing coordinator, I give her the information, kids that are in fifth grade, their school. And so she works with the assistant principal, and they schedule with the parents to bring the child in during the testing window.
Into a fifth-grade classroom?
Yes.
Okay. And how many children do we have registered so, to be independent homeschoolers at this point?
Currently, independent homeschools, we have forty-one. And then there's another category that we report to the state. It's called church or accredited online schools. Some of those are like Aaron's Academy, the Farm School, Home Life Academy. They, when, if a parent goes to the school and says, I want to withdraw my child, I have enrolled them in an online program. There's a form that the technical secretaries have that the parent fills out, and they attach verification that they have been accepted in that program. They send it to me, and we keep that on file. And they don't have to report to us anymore.
At all. So how many children, do you have any idea how many?
In the umbrella, the church-accredited online school, there are eleven total.
Fifty-two, fifty-three?
And I, I have that breakdown by school as well, but eleven total for the district. So there's a total of, what, fifty-two?
Yeah.
Kids. Plus one in the virtual, Tennessee Virtual Academy, we have one. And that's not reported on either of these because they just send us, they send Dr. Gilbert a report with the child's name and Murfreesboro City Schools, so we don't know where they're zoned. But I do have a report from the Tennessee Virtual Academy.
So we only have, is there another category, or do we only have fifty-two kids, children in the Murfreesboro City Schools area?
Well, the private schools have to send me a report twice a year. And I include that in our number that we send to the state. But those kids are not actually enrolled under us. They're in the city's zone. So we go through and check and make sure they're in the city limits, the ones that are in the city limits. And so we include it in our report to the state. But the fifty-two are those kids that are actually registered. They have registered at some point with Murfreesboro City Schools and decided to homeschool.
Thank you.
Ms. Renee?
Getting back to what Ms. Smith was asking about, how effective or how, how often do the parents respond? Do they really come in and show you this information? And they say, my child is now ready for fourth grade? How?
For example, today, I had one parent who came in and withdrew her child, and she says, I want to re-enroll in school. And so the schools have the option, well, first of all, she had to give me the attendance report before I released her to go and register at the school. And then the school always have the option of doing assessments and benchmarks on those children to actually see where they are. And make a determination at that point. So that's a school-level decision.
I know we discussed the last time we went over this policy about the attendance requirement. If they're in their own home, obviously, they're there. So it seems kind of a moot point to me. But I just wondered how many of those, let's say fifty or a hundred, actually come in and follow through with all these requirements? Do you find it's easy and they do follow that, or less so?
The requirements that I just mentioned, they have to meet those before I sign off on their approval for homeschool. And then all they have to report to us is, at the end of the year, turn in that attendance record.
So when you said we keep a report, does that mean we keep, we, Murfreesboro City keeps the report of that child and what's, this, this year Tommy is?
No. All they have to turn in to us is a copy of the attendance record.
Okay.
That's it, according to state law.
Ms. Suddles?
I had a question. You mentioned something about a church homeschool. I don't know if that's a partnership or what that is.
It's a church slash accredited online school. That's the category that's from the state.
Okay. If they're in a program like that, do, does that entity receive funding? From?
Unless they're in a private school, I think, don't we share, those, those funds follow those kids, Mr. Anderson? Is that correct? They're our kids, and they're in a private, enrolled in one of the private schools.
If they're our, I'm sorry.
They're in the city limits, and they're enrolled in a private school.
They're, we don't get them anywhere in our reports if they're in a private school. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
What, special ed kids?
Okay. So we just don't get funding for those children, I guess, is the answer to your question?
Yeah, I, my question was kind of, you know, I'm trying to see if this is a backdoor to, to charter type deal. Because if, if they're in this church, and you say it again, because I'm gonna miss it.
It's church accredited online.
Church accredited online. Like, I see advertisements all the time online, K through twelve online. I see that a lot.
Okay.
So my question has to do with how they're funded. And I'm, I'm guessing, I know we don't like write a check to K through twelve, but how does? I know we just don't get the money for that student. But then they would, if, if there's any funds to be paid, because I can't imagine that this K through twelve online is free, somebody has to pay for it.
The state funds follow the student where they end up going to school, and if they're going to school at some.
K through twelve online, it goes there.
The money's gonna go there, and the thing that, the voucher bill supposedly is dead in the legislature for this coming year, hopefully it is, because that was gonna change the rules, and we were gonna have to actually pay for that.
So, and then.
To answer your question, for example, we, we have a kid that in withdrawals tomorrow and decides they're gonna be under the Farm School umbrella. No, we do not send funds with them. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that, that kinda got me. So then, if there's any financial obligation that's on the parent to take care of that, we don't.
Usually, there's a registration fee associated with those, some of those that I just named.
And then if, if there were anything like with that K through twelve, I guess they would, they'd have to take that up with the state as far as getting that paid for.
Mr. Barrett?
I wanna get back to the attendance record. So walk me through that. Is it simple as something as a calendar that they just mark four hours every day? And, or is it something formal for, from you that they get? I was trying to figure out.
It's a form that's online on the Tennessee Department of Education website.
Okay.
It comes out every year in July. Yeah, there's an actual calendar that they turn in to me at the end of the school year.
Okay, good. I was making, at first, I was thinking they just turned in something that they did willy-nilly.
There's a form that's online.
Okay, good.
Well, I don't know that there's anything that says that they necessarily had to be truthful.
Right.
Well, that, okay, that's.
I mean, there's no, there's no validation that we would have. And, and I really was gonna be quiet, but I won't be. The, the homeschool laws have become extremely liberal, in my opinion. And that's fine if we have families that really are responsible for, for teaching their children. But until a couple of years ago, you had to be registered by the end of September. And then after that time, the superintendent could decide whether they would permit you to homeschool your children during the year or not. That allowed the superintendent, if they knew that something was going on, for example, when I was hitting up instruction, I would see children that would come in that we had been, I knew they had been tardy, I knew the police were ready to arrest the family. And so they would come in and wanna homeschool, and I could go to the director and say, I really think this child's gonna be better off in school. I can't do that anymore. So that's totally out of my hands. Now, for the virtual school, they do have a certain period of time that they can register. And I have told the virtual school that we will not accept any leeway after that point.
After July one.
And I will not, not permit them to register. They have a certain, they, it's like the homeschool used to be. There is a set time that they have to register, or they have to get permission from the director, and I'm just not giving it, and they know that. But as far as homeschool, there is no control. And so unfortunately, what we are seeing more and more is children who are returning to us from homeschool that are behind. Because if you look at the requirements on here for the testing, what it says is, if they don't have to, and correct me, Greg, because this, I'm just reading, you know. But basically, they do not have to be tested until fifth grade. And then it's really two consecutive testing years that they are behind before we can force them to come back into school.
Right.
Well, if you know anything about education, and I'm talking to the public and some others, maybe the legislature, by the time they get to fifth grade, if they are that far behind, there is, it's gonna be almost impossible for them to catch up. So in my opinion, it was a disservice to children when the decision was made to allow homeschooling at any part of the year because there are absolutely terrific homeschools out there and parents who just do a wang-bang job of educating their children. But unfortunately, what I know, too, is that we do have some situations where children are much better off in school where they're safe, where there can be learning that happens. That's my sermon for the night. But you are correct, when you look at this and you see that there's a lot of leeway, because there's a lot of leeway.
And the minimum requirement for the parent's educational level is the GED or high school diploma?
All right. Any other questions on the policy?
Well, he just hit one that I was, I think you saw my note, the GED. That's just a state mandated thing, and I guess, does anybody know why? I mean, we, they also mandate that we have teachers with a bachelor's degree. So it, it seems very inconsistent to me, and I, I don't. So it, it seems very inconsistent to me, and I, I don't know whether there's something that needs to be looked at, at legislative level on that, but maybe, but moving on, 16, 17, 18, those lines, I found that to be kind of cumbersome to understand what it was saying. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Gilbert, you gave me a note on that. And, but it says cooperate in the administration to homeschool students of appropriate tests by the Commissioner of Education, his or her designee, or by professional testing services in grades five, seven, and nine. Now, who's cooperating? And where's the test? I guess the test is coming from the commissioner, and I guess we're talking about Ten Ready.
State test, yes.
Anyway, I couldn't unwind that really to, to, to understand. And like I said in my note, I was born at night, but not last night.
Well, now, on, on these tests in grades five, seven, and nine, don't they have to go to the homeschool to take those tests?
The zone school, yes, sir.
I mean, they're zone schools, is what I'm saying, yeah.
So that's what it's trying to say then, is that the parent has to make sure they're getting, get that child to the school for the testing.
Right.
At least because it says, "A parent wishing to conduct a homeschool shall meet the following requirements," and that's one of them. Making sure they're getting tested.
And is homeschooling restricted to just the parent? This is addressing a parent.
Parents have the option, I think, in the law, they can hire two.
So the neighbor could come over and be the teacher.
They do that a lot.
Yeah, I, my understanding is that, that my friends that I've known, that if they don't know a subject well, they kinda have a little consortium, and they get together and, and do that. So, I mean, I, I have the greatest respect for many, many people that are homeschooling their children, but some, some I'm leery. That's, of that.
Yes, I know some families that are very good at it, and I admire that, 'cause a dear child that I would teach would be lost in the weeds, so.
Can we make our policy more stringent than the state?
That's...
No, I think, I think the legislature was very clear a few years ago, that, and, and that's when they changed the law. So I think it would be difficult for us to, to mandate anything that's outside of the state law.
Because if we, we could, and we could add test key, uh, online, or number seven, line sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, we could add years.
I think you can answer that, Kelly, but I think it would be difficult for us to do that, because it is specified in state law.
I don't think we can add more requirements than what the state has dictated. This is, this is, this is what the state has said we can require. This is the maximum what we can do.
It's the max, it's not the minimum.
Right.
All right, do we have a motion to approve policy six point two oh two, homeschools?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Vaneer, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, the next policy you have is six point two oh nine. It's regarding child custody and parental access. It is similar to the policy that we previously had adopted. It is, this is the language, um, recommended by TSB. It states that the board is going to presume that the person who enrolls a student in school is the student's custodial parent, legal guardian, or legal custodian, and unless they, we are presented with a court document that states otherwise. So the, that person that enrolls the child will be presumed to be the parent. And, um, if there are some sort of custodial issues, we request copies of signed certified court orders that we keep on file. This is becoming a issue that I deal with on a daily basis. We also keep, um, the physical custody of a child is not to be, um, changed at a school unless the person seeking custody of the child presents the school official with a certified copy of a valid court order from a Tennessee court, designating that the person who has custody of, designating the person who has custody of the child, and, um, who the person is that is seeking custody, has to give a reasonable advance notice to the school. Now, um, that has been an issue that I've had to deal with in, in recently this school year. People, we have, our society is much more transit than it used to be, and, um, so we'll have people moving here from other states, and they will come in, and in Tennessee, you are supposed to take your parenting plans and your custody documents to a Tennessee court to have them recognized. And so I'll run into a lot of situations where parents are having custody issues and arguing over who's allowed to pick up a child or what have you, but they haven't gotten their documents recognized in Tennessee. But that is something that people don't understand, and they expect the school to enforce these custody documents. We are not the enforcers of these documents. If they're having issues with each other, they're supposed to go back to the court system or mediator to handle it. So that's, um, that's something that the schools have to deal with almost daily now.
All right, any questions, comments?
And there is a typo in line two.
All right, do we have a motion to approve policy six point two oh nine, child custody, parent access?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Saddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, board. Under reports and information, our first report, Mr. Marlin, I'm gonna let you, if you would, Joe, if you would introduce Ms. Kalish, please, since she's in your department.
I, I'll have to tell you what she said as, I think Lisa was pointing out to her that, that she was near the end of the presentations, and we said, "That's because math is like dessert." She's gonna deliver some dessert tonight. Cindy, uh, Ms. Kalish has been with us, uh, she started last year as our math coordinator, and we've seen a lot of progress made. Our, um, our staff, our coaches are, are really taking the ball and running with it. And that's what she wanted to present to you tonight. So without any further ado, I'll just say, Ms. Cindy Kalish.
Thank you, Joe. And he took, he thought the line, and then he took the line, I'll tell ya. But it is kind of like dessert. And I do wanna say thank you for giving the opportunity, and as most people would say, something that I feel like is an extremely important topic, and that's math in Murfreesboro City School, but one that I am extremely passionate about also. So anytime you wanna talk math, just email me and, and we'll sit down, um, and we will do that. So, um, but I will try to keep it brief tonight. Okay. So where are we in Murfreesboro City Schools? And, um, as Joe said, we met last spring as an instructional team, and, um, we kinda talked about goals. Where are our goals for next year, that goal setting and the why? And the first goal that we set is we definitely want those math scores in Murfreesboro City Schools to raise. We definitely, and we want to remain above the state average. So those are kind of like two major goals that we established right away from, as an instruction team. And then the next is how do we do it, right? How do we do that? And we really know that the most important person in a child's education is that classroom teacher. There is nobody more important, not a curriculum, not a resource, but that classroom teacher. So in order to raise scores and remain above state average, we have to focus on that teacher. Looking a resource, or research, huh, we know that to do that, we have to increase content knowledge. Because when teachers have increased math content knowledge, students succeed. They have that ability, and students are successful. So then you kind of think about, okay, how are we gonna build that? And, um, Dr. Gilbert has, you know, talked about what will PLCs look like planning, and we're really focusing on, do we understand the Tennessee standards? We're looking at those. How deep are they? And what lessons can we use to help teachers to look at those standards and make students mathematically successful? Always that focus is on students. So that kind of work was in the spring and talking about where's our focus gonna be? Where are we going? And then, as you know, I've got this terrific team. And this terrific team includes Gail over here from Bradley, and John Simmons, um, from Black Fox, and Allison Couldn't Be Here from Mitchell Nielsen. So our job is, that's great, that's a great goal, but what's our action steps? What are we gonna do as math coaches, as math coordinator, to do this, to support teachers? So we came up with four goals that we have been, it's been a consistent message since the day they, you know, since school has started. And those four goals this year have been to use number talks in their classrooms, right? So we're asking teachers, and we're providing PD, what are number talks? What do they look like? And what we're looking at is an eight to ten-minute section of the math block where students are talking numbers. They're solving problems mentally, math computation. And that is ongoing every week. So children, you know, when we hear they don't know their facts, well, this is more of not only knowing facts, but knowing strategies, and how do we get that numbers, and why do those numbers work, and looking at each other's thinking. We also said, one of our goals was to make sure students were solving word problems, a daily, steady diet of word problems. Can they apply the math? So we're looking at that. An uninterrupted math block. We want the teachers to have a solid math block that they are focusing at their instruction right there during that time on those students. And also, the system has iReady. And, um, research shows that magic number of about forty-five minutes a week is showing student growth. And it is a diagnostic tool that we have online that targets students' deficits or enriches where they are. It, it takes them even further. So those are the four goals that we kind of set up as a team, thinking about where can we provide support and making, uh, teachers aware of that, and knowing that we're there to help them with that. In addition, in the district, we have the math support team, and I did not misspell it. We kind of feel a little bit like AA, because we're kind of addicted to math, okay? We're just gonna say it. My name is Cindy Kalish, and I love math. And so we are the Mathematical Analysis and Achievement Teaching Habits. So each month, a grade-level team, and they are made up from one teacher from every school. So, um, we're revamping it a little bit, but it's twelve teachers that are involved, meet once a month at their grade level. During that time, they really look at a really challenging standard for their students, that grade level upcoming in the next month. They talk about that standard, they think about how, how would that be assessed? They think about a task, and, and they actually solve it. They do a problem right there, think about different solutions. Then they take it back to their teams, right? They take it back to their schools, they talk about it, they implement it that month sometime with students. They bring back student work, and they analyze it. What were the misconceptions? What would we go back for those students that have it? Well, how would we enrich? What will we do with those students that are struggling? So that math support network started last year, and it's continuing through this year, and that has been, um, a huge success. In addition, I'm hoping you've heard about Project Inspire, that little grant between Murfreesboro City Schools and, um, MTSU. And we actually met today. Last summer, we trained eighty-seven teachers, right? This grant provides those teachers with over five hundred dollars worth of materials, children's literature, and professional books. When the teachers attend the trainings, the first half of that day, um, the MTSU, um, professors dig deep into content. They build that, they stretch them. They, I mean, they stretch us all. And then in the second half of the day, they break into grade level, and then we have master teachers that work with those teachers on effective lessons to teach those, whatever, um, this summer we worked on number and operations and, um, algebraic thinking, took me a minute, algebraic thinking. So that was last summer, but this year it's ongoing. We have cohorts four and five. Today, we met with cohort four, which is teachers, there's forty-two teachers, that attended either cohort one, two, or three last year. We're digging deep into geometry, measurement, and data. And then we have cohort five, which is thirty-two teachers that are brand-new to Project Inspire. So we're really digging deep into math. We're digging, digging deep and helping with that. In addition, the team came up with some weekly resources for teachers, and that's available online. That included a lot of the things that we talked about already. One thing we haven't talked about are the SPY review boards. Um, and we just sent a survey at the end of November, December. Teachers had two weeks to fill it out, and we found out we're just kind of digging into them now. Those SPY review boards are a hit. We, we, they were not easy to make, but they have been very successful in supporting teachers because it is something they can give their students to review skills in the past. This year, in addition, we're sending out fluency games, um, again, to build that mental math computation that's so important. Those are available for teachers. This year, um, Murfreesboro City Schools has the big inch in all classrooms, which is a manipulative to help with fractions and that conceptual understanding of fractions. And that's been really exciting, because we did our traditional training of coaches, and then we called in the math support team, and we trained them to take, so they could take it back to their schools. But we also have offered it online, online PD. So we've worked with, um, Perry Wilson and his team, and, um, that has been exciting, because teachers can do it on the weekends, over break, or whatever. We had fifty-four teachers that did the training in November, and the numbers came in today right before I came. I got an email, and I didn't get to look at it, but that online PD. Um, fifth grade rolled out the big inch in fractions first in the skeleton sequence, and they, the stories and the feedback were exciting. You just walk into school, and they go, "Oh, I wanna tell you about the big inch, I wanna tell you." I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." Fourth grade is just starting, and in a couple weeks, third grade. So that has been a resource that we provided, and I feel like, um, the teachers are very appreciative and are using that. So then I think our next question's, where are we going? Where are our next steps? This, it's a lot. I feel like there's a lot going on right now, but this team right here, they never rest. So, um, with, based on this teacher survey, we asked several questions, and one of them was, what do you need? What do you need for support? And we're kind of digging into that and getting some topics, and again, for future PD. The online's going great. So do we do online? Joe's been instrumental in getting maybe some webinars. We may be doing some webinars. But thinking out of the box, kind of, how can we deliver it that teachers can get PD, get what they need to deepen their content, where it's not necessarily always right after school or on the weekends? So we're looking at that. We have a newly formed math team that's working with Mid Cumberland Core Office, and they have actually developed some training modules that we could bring back and redeliver. So we're in the process of being trained and then deciding this summer what we might redeliver here in Murfreesboro City. And always, and I just want you always to know that, I was thrilled today when you walk in and you see all these children, because that is our focus. What is going to help those students? And that is always, and thank you, Dr. Gilbert, she always keeps that focus on looking at that individual child. Okay? So as I wrap up, I'm just wanting to kind of remember where we started, is we do want those math scores to raise, no doubt about it, and remain above the state, um, on Tian Ready. We know that that teacher's the most important person, the person's gonna make a difference in that child. So our focus is on that teacher, supporting that teacher and getting them what they need, building that content knowledge this year, using that effective PD. Okay? And so I'm gonna kind of open up if you have any thoughts or questions.
All right, Ms. Vaneer?
That's a mouthful, thank you.
I know.
Well, and I... Y'all are very busy, and I appreciate it. I am a fan of iReady. I, I think it's fantastic. Um, I'm not sure that my colleagues know what that is, if you wanna explain that, but, um, I've had a parent address me and was kind of followed up. It doesn't seem to be, um, like iPhone applicable. You have to use a desktop. It's my impression. And so the forty-five minutes of homework, I don't know if y'all might contact iReady. It's just, it'd be, you know, if, if I were somewhere with my child and we had a few minutes to do iReady, it would be really nice to be able to pull up the phone to add up to the forty-five minutes on that.
Right, right.
So, are, am I correct that it's not?
I believe they have worked on it, um, and so, you know, I say this with hesitancy because, you know, I don't wanna say it's gonna work on every phone, because they did, and it should be iPad-ready now. Trent and Mickey are making those adjustments, um, on the iPads within the district, and it's being very successful. Um, and I would, and I would have to defer to Mick and, Mickey and Trent, because they have been the ones that've done all that work.
Maybe iPad-ready.
Yes.
I don't know it's phone-ready.
I'm not-
Yeah, okay, well, just, just-
I think they are iPad ready.
And I don't mind asking them, Ms. Smith, and we can get back with you, um-
Just to something, I, I, because I think it's a wonderful, I mean, I would just be so much more brilliant had I had iReady. But I mean, they're, they're making it fun. I mean, it's really fun, the kids, and, and of course, anytime they can play on the computer.
It is amazing, and I'm gonna say this, um, walking into a classroom, and what will, what I will see traditionally, you know, most of the time when I'm walking in, a teacher will be working with a small group of students, right? And another small group might be working on something else, and then you have a small group that are working on iReady. And you walk in, and of those five children working, you will look, and one child, and I was looking, and this child was working on two-digit addition, just plain blank raw problems, right? Another child had something very similar, but they had the base 10 blocks to manipulate and use, where another child was working on subtraction one digit. So the lessons are designed, the students take a diagnostic test, and the lessons are based on wherever their weaknesses are, where their deficit area might be. And, um, another thing that I think, you know, and at first, the teachers were not really sure about this, is say that you have a second grader, but they're doing multiplication and division already. Well, see, iReady recognizes that in the diagnostic, so when the teacher walks by, they may be working on perimeter and area, which is not really a, a traditional second grade skill, but because they mastered those previous skills, it has the tutorial and it moves them on. So it really does meet the needs of that individual student.
Okay.
It doesn't take the place of the teacher, but it does support them.
The other question I have is, because you are working so hard to improve math skills, um, I know that there was a math competition that, so the elementary schools participated in MTSU. Are some of the schools having, um, math teams now, as part of like their-
One of the things that, that we did is the multiplication challenge. I know that a couple of our schools have a, a rabid competition going between, um, between them, so we're seeing that kind of thing more. I don't know about as far as competition with MTSU. We can certainly check into that. I'm not aware.
And I was gonna say, Dr. Gilbert, you know, and, and you know I'm a friend of Dr. Winter, so, um, we talk quite often. There used to be a math competition at MTSU. I did not realize it was still going on, um, because at one point, we would take math teams over there. I did not realize if it's still, and I can, I can definitely check on that, but-
And when I'm thinking of was, um, four years ago.
I haven't seen anything come across my desk, but we can find out, because you're with Jerry.
I, I was just thinking of, this, it's always inspires one to improve if they know they can be part of a team, you know? And so, that's what I was-
Mr. Barrett?
And if you're on Twitter, encourage you to follow her. She's on there all the time, promoting, promoting math, promoting the district. I follow, I see it all the time. Congrats on that.
Thank you, 'cause you even like my stuff.
I know. It allows me to see what you all are doing, and you're doing a great job, so that's one-
Well, and it is kind of exciting, um, to have that, because, um, I, I always say we have a team, but, you know, I feel like we have a nation, a nationwide team. Um, and through, um, social media, we do communicate and, and share ideas, and it's awesome. And I'm hoping I'm getting the word out about Murfreesboro City.
You are, and it's great to see that, so I'm glad to do it.
Mr. Ballard?
Yeah, this is great, and I appreciate what you're trying to do to set the bar higher. Uh, in the case of Ten Ready, uh, remind me, I think our district was 38% proficient in math?
I don't know. I know we're above the state, but I didn't, I didn't bring that with me. Do you know?
I, I would say, I think we're right around there. I don't know the actual-
So let's say it's 38%.
Yes.
So what is your goal to be better than? In other words, if you wanna put a number to it, I like numbers.
I do too, Mr. Ballard, I do. And, um, I set the goal out, I know everybody's looking at me right now, um, because I do want us to be 60% proficient. That is, and we-
60%?
I know.
In, in what timeline?
I, I want it by the end of this year.
Yay!
I gotta be really honest, and they're all looking at us.
I will. Really will.
Because I've said the principals know it, and the coaches know it, and, um, and, um, and I, I really feel like, and, um, we're working towards it, and I really feel like there's some great things going on. I mean, I don't know, I, you know, how much time do y'all have, but, um, just come with me one day, and stop and see. But the teachers, I'm telling you, it's very exciting, um, and we're seeing a lot of good things happening, good things happening. And so, and again-
I wish you the best in 60%, and that's a wonderful goal to achieve. But what, if you had to think realistically what you could achieve, in other words, if you were betting your paycheck next year on whether you were gonna get a certain percentage, what do you, what do you?
Should I tell them what?
We, we have, each school has an AMO, what's called an AMO, and then we have a district AMO, too, for math, and we also have it from, for ELA, which, English. And so, what, there is a single AMO, and there's also a double AMO, so it's a projection of if we grow the way we should grow. So we get that from the state. So I would say certainly, what we have said is we wanna reach the double AMO, that not just the single AMO, but the double AMO. Uh, a single AMO would give us a year's growth, but we really wanna see two years' growth.
And we really are meeting with teachers and, and administrators and sharing that, and where are we right now? We've done it, we did a temperature check right before Christmas. Are we on goal to meet that? And if we're not, what can we do? You know, where can we help? Should we revisit those four goals set out earlier in the year, you know, or should we be adding to it? What, what do we miss?
If each school could get a double AMO, I would be a very happy woman.
Well, that's great. Well, I applaud your efforts. That's wonderful. Thank you.
John, I'm gonna give you just one minute. But I, but I do want, here's what I would like for you to talk about. I'd like for you to talk about, because you've been with the district a long time, I'd like for you to talk about the changes you've seen, because I know you verbalized that with coaches meeting, but I'd, I'd like for you just briefly to talk about what it looks like in a teacher's classroom or in a school, 'cause we can have the words, but what it really looks like in that classroom.
Well, the biggest key that I see is, is just come sometime, I invite all of you, come and walk down the halls and listen to the rich math language that you hear when the doors are open. You hear kids talking now, and a lot of times, I know when I was in school and learning math, it was somebody at the board doing a lot, but now it's children, and they're sharing their ideas, and they're critiquing other people's reasoning. They're making sense of those connections, and you see it with our kids, just in their ability to problem solve. You'll see rich math tasks in most classrooms now, when you go in, it's not as many problems on the board. These kids are involved in problem solving, which is one of those areas, that Ten Ready, that's the big shift that we're seeing, is kids actually learning to apply mathematics instead of just a, a set group of algorithms, or however you would wanna say it. But you see application in classrooms, and you see kids, like I heard earlier, the, the principals were saying, you see kids having fun with math. I, I mean, if you go into a good number talk in a classroom, kids ju- jump all over each other wanting to respond to those things, because they learn so many strategies, and they, they wanna share those. And it, just seeing that, the liveliness of, of the instruction and the growing content knowledge of our teachers, because I, I said years ago, my principal and I sat down together, he said, we looked at, it was our content knowledge of our teachers a lot of times. You, you know, we said people were either math people or they weren't, and our kids understand that there are no math people anymore. We can find a strategy to get you to where you need to be to help you be successful, and that's what I've seen, less direct instruction and more children involved in learning, and the manipulatives like the Big Inch was mentioned, but we have so many good manipulatives that are being used in our classrooms, uh, and Project Inspire, I was there all day today, I can promise you, I was one of those, my brain is still not quite back together from, from doing a base 20 system. If you ever wanna try that, I'll send you some problems. Uh, but being able to put your hands on it and, and manipulate it i- is an amazing thing for our kids, and you're seeing more of that in our instruction.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, both, all three of you. Very good report. Sounds like we're making some major progress in an area that we need. All right. Uh, enrollment figures?
Yes, sir. The enrollment figure is through the end of the fourth period, and I, I checked with our attendance people today, just to get a feel for how many new students came after the first of the year, and I had good news and bad news. I said, "We had 71 new students come after the first of the year." Bad news is 65 left us. We talk about the mobility in Murfreesboro City Schools, and that's a perfect example. 71 come in, 65 leave. So we have that, we have that turnover constantly, and that, that makes it tougher in the schools when they have that volume of, of turnover. But overall, our pupil teacher ratio is 19.85 for the whole, a whole district in all grade levels. Had 95% attendance, it dropped a little bit, 'cause we were dealing with some, uh, some issues about the flu. The next report will probably be the same, because it picks up most of December. Uh, overall, 8,837 students, we're up 240 students to where we ended last year. So at the next board meeting, I'll probably have the report, it won't be in your packet, 'cause the, it doesn't end until the 23rd, so I'll bring it to the table. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Growing, all the time, growing. We got to get some land, folks.
You are correct.
We got to get some land sooner.
Do we have any updates on that, since there's been?
We met with, uh, the interim, uh, city manager on Friday morning, and so, um, he had gotten some prices on a couple of pieces, and there's one more piece that, that he wanted to check on, so we'll be following up on that this week. But, but he understands where we are as far as needing the land.
Are they the same ones we were looking at before on the bus?
Um, yes, but with one addition.
Okay.
I would, I would still like to be posted at Fair Hall.
Personnel report?
The personnel report you have, uh, in front of you, if you have any questions about that, if you'll please get in touch with me or with Mr. Ringstaff, uh, after the meeting, I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Anything else to come before the board tonight? Any other business?
Mr. Chair, I do have one, um, piece of business, and, um, I, I would like to request this of the board. In my contract, it requests that I give the board four months' notice if I plan to, um, resign. I would request that the board would give me six months' notice if they plan to get rid of me. So under, under the contract termination, I would appreciate having that much notice.
All right. Do we have a motion to put that in the contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Mr. King?
Uh, tomorrow is the deadline, I think, for the early registration for National School Boards Convention. I'm actually giving some serious thought to going. I think it's April 9, 10, 11. I forgot where it is, Denver, somewhere like that.
Where's Denver located?
I, I can't, San Antonio, I can't remember. Um, but I won't know until later in the game, if I can get the time off to go, but I didn't have the chance to look, see what the registration, is it refundable, et cetera, et cetera, but just wanted to remind everybody about that.
Okay. Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I'll, anybody, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and good night.